Commissioners, the light's on.
Light's on.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Reno County Commission meeting Tuesday, April twenty eighth. The order, please. First, we have a pledge allegiance if you'll join me, please. And then after that, we have a prayer by Mr. Henry Woodhull with our community members. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, each eternal father, we have just celebrated the resurrection of your son. Like be mindful that he first suffered for us, for our sins, so we may have our life in you. We give you thanks for your hand of protection, for keeping the coronavirus spreading rapidly through our community. We thank you to shelter us, continue to shelter us from man and natural calamity, even as we enter our tornado season. And safety, for law enforcement, fire, medical, emergency personnel, for frontline and essential workers, protecting their health as they serve others. In addition, we also thank you in health, all healthy workers that staff, carry out their duties, as they serve the well-being of your people. And wisdom and strength, Governor Kelly, those making difficult decisions on behalf of your people, very difficult and unknowing times. We ask for your continued blessing for all citizens, services, and industries, together support and strength in our economy. And we plead for your mercy to industry, farmers, care center, hospitals, schools, and churches. We commend you, Father, our Commissioners, leaders, and administrators of Reno County. Grant them wisdom, turn out fear, and protect regulation, and decision for your people to do what they serve. I, the Methodist this morning, commend your people, pardon me, the citizens, whether the storm ahead, your name is war, fight, work, and they do. Your last, all of it, your son is Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, great much, Henry. For me, my wisdom, thank you, this is my prayer. Um, I would ask everybody to get their microphone, except the Commissioners, please, and those that are participating in the point where they need to participate. Appreciate it. I learned that from Nick a month ago or so. Um, all right, Nick, I don't know if you had, uh, anything from the Health Department? Um, Nick and Adam, are you there, any report?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. I thought I would do this similarly, as I think we currently giving their traditional prep, but I'll allow Adam to give his report. And, uh, we're assuming, um, to have a draft document, um, that has been correlated to discussions of the recently, uh, developed Reno County recovery test report in terms of the framework for the beginnings of a phase reopening for Reno County, should we have the authority to implement our own strategy at the local level. So if, if the Commissioners are, um, are good with that strategy, that's, that's how we proceed this morning. All right. So I know some of you are on the call, but for the purposes of our audience, I'll just give a brief, um, situation report, um, as of this morning. The United States is up to nine hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and ninety, uh, positive COVID- nineteen cases, uh, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six of those have resulted in deaths. Um, surveillance, uh, state of Colorado has thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine cases with seven hundred and six deaths. Second, our close, uh, Oklahoma has three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one cases with a hundred and five, seven deaths. Missouri has seven thousand, three hundred and seven cases with three hundred and three deaths. And state of Nebraska has three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight cases with fifty-six deaths. Uh, where they stay in Kansas, as of yesterday, the official count of three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight cases with a hundred and twenty-eight point deaths, four hundred and ninety-six of those resulting in hospitalizations for Kansas. Uh, here locally, we did have another case yesterday, so we are at twenty-seven positive cases, and we're working on that, those have included, are since recovered, uh, four counties transferred, uh, both recovered and traveled back to Oregon. Uh, so we have twenty-six Reno County constituents total cases, eight of which have recovered, uh, which leaves us up to nineteen active Reno County constituent cases currently for Reno County. We've added a few different metrics, and we'll continue to work on this, uh, in particular, uh, to, uh, to be in line with the plans that we're getting forward from the opening. Uh, but we have a total death number, and a total number of cases for Reno County. So to this point, we've tested five hundred and twenty-four Reno County residents, four hundred and ninety-seven of those have come back again. So we're at a total positive test rate of five percent, one five percent for Reno County. To put that in a little bit of context, the state, as of yesterday, was running at about a four percent positive test rate. Um, and about point eighty-three percent of our population has been tested, uh, to this point. Uh, we have, uh, throughout the duration of this event, we've had several hospitalized. Uh, right now, we have, uh, actually, this is not updated, so we're directly from, uh, from my hospital contact, we have one positive COVID- nineteen patient who is activated right now in, in the hospital, and then another positive COVID, um, who is under observation of the hospital, hospital currently taking five tests results with individuals in their report. Additionally, our self-report form today, we've got a hundred or two Reno County constituents , uh, submitted, uh, or submitted off the form, and any, any of those, or two have self-identified, essentially, uh, giving us the opportunity to do disease investigation, uh, and follow-up with them. Inside of that, um, again, the, the, uh, we send out, do the, the, uh, Commissioner Bush to audit, um, for thinking, we'll, 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 I think, maybe one or two, um, he was replaced by Commissioner Hurst, um, last week, Reno County, uh, Reno County, I've been on the recovery task force, uh, submitting to develop the actual task force, uh, the span of, uh, Wednesday, from Wednesday to Friday, we have, I think seventeen or eighteen subcommittee meetings via Zoom. And then we have the first, uh, collection of the task force steering committee, um, on Friday at one P M. And then we, we also held our second meeting yesterday at three P M, to, to, to discuss an initial draft of, uh, of potential reopening, stage reopening plan for Reno County. Uh, it's been, uh, the task force in that process, while it's been a lot of hard work and a lot of meetings, uh, I've been very optimistic with the amount of engagement, um, and constructive conversation and input, um, a lot of people, um, a lot of people are taken, uh, taken it serious, uh, taking the appropriate steps, and being very, uh, hopeful in terms of their approach towards the work. So we can speak a little bit more on that, uh, after Adam's, um, after Adam's report, but in case there's any questions with everything that I've just talked to to this point, I would open it up before I let Adam have a mic.
Let's go ahead and listen to Adam and then come back and see any questions if you want to do.
Good morning, Commissioner. Adam Weiser, Emergency Management Director. I just want to kind of give you a brief update of what the past couple of months have looked like. Um, it seems like it's been a year, but really it hasn't been that long. Um, I want to give a brief timeline and then talk about where we currently are. February third is when we started having discussions in the county about, uh, when is known as COVID- nineteen coming to the county. Um, the week of March seventh is when the county announced our first case. March twelfth is when the governor issued her state disaster declaration. March thirteenth, Trump, uh, announced a national emergency. Um, we started daily conference calls, and you get everyone in here that's been a part of on March sixteenth. Uh, March seventeenth, schools closed for the year. Uh, at March nineteenth, we declared a public health emergency. And then on the twentieth is when we announced our first positive COVID- nineteen case. The governor issued her state home order on March thirtieth, and that's what we're still under today. Currently, we're one of eighty-nine counties that have declared a public health emergency. There's been a total of seventy-six counties who have positive COVID- nineteen cases. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment is currently monitoring fifty-five clusters of COVID- nineteen. Uh, eighteen of those are at long-term care facilities, two at group living facilities, one in a correctional facility, two at healthcare facilities, six at religious gatherings, six at meatpacking facilities, and twenty at private companies. Um, on one week ago today, they were only monitoring thirty-nine clusters, so we're up about sixteen clusters since then. Uh, as of right now, there are no clusters being monitored by K D H E in Reno County. As far as the stay-at-home order, the governor, uh, told us last Friday that she does not intend on extending that stay-at-home order past the third. There's also some court documents out there that indicate the state could reopen as early as the fourth. Uh, more to the emphasis Governor Kelly put on federal, state, and local jurisdictions is to work together to prioritize testing to reopen the economy. And I think we've done a wonderful job, uh, between the Health Department, the Commission, and everyone in the chamber, organizing these groups to reopen the, the community, reopen our economy. Another thing that should be coming to Reno County, hopefully either late this week or early next week, will be a community testing site that is done, uh, it would be funded by Walmart. Uh, we haven't not announced that yet, there will still be more details to come, so this is, this is official announcement, that we will have a community testing site in the near future. Uh, what that looks like right now, uh, what we're being told is that, uh, Walmart's going to come in on state property and essentially have an R V or a, a vehicle there, and people are going to register via an app to come be tested. And, uh, the test name, everything is covered completely by, uh, a Walmart. That's why it's a Walmart testing site. So we don't have to do really anything to support locally, it's going to be, uh, a state-run event, but it is going to be in our community.
Uh, Nick, will that testing be, uh, a positive test? Is that the type of test that, that would be occurring?
Hi, Commissioner. Uh, when you say a positive test, could you clarify that statement?
Well, I've, I've heard so many different types of tests being done at this point in time. This Walmart test that you're talking about, will that just be whether you're positive or negative, or will that be some other type of test?
Oh, yeah, so the testing proposed by the, the, we'll just call it Walmart testing site, um, is the nasopharyngeal swab that we're currently utilizing, so it would just, it would just report whether you're positive or negative. The other test that's getting a lot of attention is the antibody testing, which is, this is not, so this would be the standard nasal swab that we've been operating off of to this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Nick, uh, Nick?
Yes, sir.
For this test, how long will it take for the results to come back, and how will people be notified what the results are?
Yeah, so my understanding is, it's the similar procedure as if they were to get swabbed right now at the, uh, Hutchinson Clinic, uh, Prairie Star, or the hospital. So most likely what they will be doing is swabbing, submitting it in a tube, and, uh, it's a partnership between Quest and, uh, another, another private laboratory. Right now, our turnaround time has been about a day to a day and a half on those, so that would be my expectation in the absence of any other information to this point, that it would be about a day, day and a half. Um, it, since it's state-run, my assumption is going to be immediately fed into the same database that I receive my information from with regard to any testing that happens in our community now. And so, uh, most likely they will be, my, my assumption is, is that we're going to be making the calls on, uh, positive result, negative result, um, and, and of course, all the epidemiological follow-up associated with that.
By we, by, by we, you mean your public health department staff?
Uh, yes, it, again, without any further information, which is limited at this time, I'm going to make that assumption, it's going to, it's going to fall onto the Health Department.
Okay, and how many tests? I don't know the time period or how long a test takes. Is there a limit on how many tests that can be done in a day based on the swabs? Or is it going to be like as many as we can get through from this time to this time?
I, so my understanding of the process to this point is it's going to be by appointment, so, um, so they're going to have, much like, uh, the self-report form that the county developed for, uh, for our self-report, most likely you just go online, and they're going to have a set amount of appointment times during, I think they said, uh, what'd you say, zero nine hundred to sixteen hundred, uh, or nine A M. to, uh, four?
Four P M.
Uh, ten, oh, ten to four. Uh, so from ten to four, whatever they allot for their specific timeframes, whether it's fifteen minutes or thirty minutes or what have you, that's probably going to be the threshold for number of tests per day. Um, but outs, outside of that, I assume it's just going to be on whatever the inventory they have. That capacity is also going to be the hamstring for how many tests they can run a day as well. And we, and we know, uh, they haven't changed it, but Thurs, they'll be here Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays at the, at the state fairgrounds.
Okay, and I'm assuming that you have, or you're going to contact, uh, the City of Hutch's, uh, law enforcement and, uh, Public Works for cones and things to set these lines up? Because you may have people lined up there at seven A M. And if it's anything like what I've seen on T V, you are going to have a lot of cars there.
Yeah, so, well, I'm, from that safety standpoint, I might let Adam jump into that one.
Good, good pass.
Commissioner, this has been something we've been, we've been trying to actively get since, uh, probably a month and a half ago. And what, what we had actually done is we had laid out a local plan where if it wasn't going to be supported by, by the state, uh, this is how we plan to open it locally. Uh, we had contacted, uh, the Hutchinson Police Department as well as the Public Works Department to talk about that plan initially, and they're all on board to support us. Uh, so they know this is coming, or at least the police department knows this is coming, um, but we don't have the exact details exactly when this van or this R V is going to show up yet. So as soon as, as soon as we get those details more in writing, we'll be in contact with the police department and Public Works, uh, and Highway Patrol, because Highway Patrol's going to be doing security for them, to talk about a traffic flow plan and exactly what that's going to look like.
I'm sure you're all over, but I can't emphasize enough that you cannot overplan this piece of it. Because I've been amazed at the number of people that have talked to me about this, and a state fair will be easy, but the Walmart parking lot's going to be a challenge.
So it's statewide, and state of Kansas, it doesn't sound like there's going to be any that are actually in a Walmart parking lot. Uh, all of them are going to be on, uh, state property for liability reasons. Uh, they're calling it a Walmart testing site just because Walmart is the one who's funding it.
So it won't actually be at the Walmart parking lot?
Correct. It'll, it'll be on, uh, state fair property.
I would make that very clear, as everybody drives to Walmart, when they hear it's the Walmart testing.
And they're supposed to be providing signs, and the state P I Os are coming out with some sort of press release. So as soon as we get more information, we're going to push that out, but, uh, we felt it was important to get in front of the Commission today and get, get live today before, uh, anything actually comes into the community.
I agree. Now, you always do a great job, I'm just encouraging you to overplan this, so it doesn't become a disaster, people cutting in line, or all those things that you might see.
We'll do that, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Just there. Nick, are, are you wanting to discuss at all this, uh, working document that, uh, is your draft?
Yeah, I was hoping for a little bit of time this morning that I could make the Commission aware, as well as, um, Commissioner Bush, uh, took part in the steering committee, um, the conversation yesterday, so I would, uh, I would, uh, welcome any comments that he might have as well, but, um, i- if, if you're ready, I'm happy to kind of give the Commission a brief overview of the status of the document and some of the, I think, major points, uh, uh, for reopening moving forward, if, if, if you're ready.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Uh, Nick, can I interject here? I haven't seen the document, but I'm happy to hear the overview of it.
Sure, and I, and I think, um, I think I have the capacity to share my screen, so I was also going to share it as I spoke about specific aspects of it as well. Let me, um...
So while you're doing that, Nick, I know that you talked about this, uh, this morning in the call, but it's important to emphasize that this is a draft document, it needs to be presented as such, and that when we get, and that this is going to be reviewed again by the committees and may be changed, and that when we get the final, uh, state of Kansas document, that we, uh, may have changes on that. So this is, uh, a pretty rough draft, but I do think the sooner we get this information out to the community, even in draft form, the better. Would you agree with that, Nick?
Uh, I would, yes, Commissioner Bush. Um, yeah, again, uh, all the work, um, all the work essentially is predicated on, uh, the assumption that the state is going to lift without any, um, differing, uh, guidelines or, or authorities that we're going to be beholden to at the local level. So this, so, so that's ob, whoops, that's obviously the caveat with what's presented in front of you. Uh, can everyone, everyone can see my screen? Okay. Uh, so I, I won't go over into the minutia, but there are some things, um, I, I had a brief, uh, discussion yesterday with District Attorney Keith Schroeder, as well as, uh, County Counselor Joe Sullivan. Uh, and so the, the first part, the first two pages of this document are, are lead-in, uh, but I'm seeking clarity on the aspect of whether a, um, a Reno County order, uh, health order would need to be issued to align with the aspects of this plan, or, um, kind of the legal semantics of, of what needs to move forward. So there, there's just some language right here to that effect, um, in the absence of, uh, any further guidance at the moment, but I continue to, I continue to visit with council, um, and the D A., and then obviously take stock of what's happening at the state level. But outside of that, these first two pages essentially are just giving, uh, a, a kind of a lead-in overview, uh, in terms of the documentation. Um, the next page, this is fa, or page three, which has phase one, is essentially, this is where we're at today. So this is under the Reno Ca, or the statewide stay-at-home order, and just simply states that this is, this is we, where we are at. For the purposes of this documentation, um, phase two, uh, all things being equal, is potentially the phase we could move into, um, on May fourth, when the governor's stay-at-home order, um, concludes. And so this has been, uh, there's multiple phases built into it, and I can touch on it, but this will be the main phase, th, and, and yesterday, again, this was the main phase that, um, the steering committee, uh, itself, uh, was, uh, really focused on yesterday. Uh, and I'll, I'll jump back to this, because obviously I think this is most pertinent in terms of timing. Uh, but then there's also, uh, uh, three more pha, phases in terms of phase three. So, um, this is built off of a, uh, an example document, uh, with aspects pulled from, uh, a number of other counties' working draft documents that I have, I've had the privilege to see. Uh, but Shawnee County is, uh, Shawnee County's working document that they're proposing is, is what the mainstay of this is built off of. And they've built, um, between the phase two and phase three, they've built a buffer of two weeks before transitioning into that third phase. And then, so that would essentially be the earliest possible date of May eighteenth. And then phase four, they, they, they selected, um, or they opted for a twenty-eight day. Um, I, I don't necessarily know exactly the motivation between twenty-eight days versus another two-week window, I, I think I've seen, I've seen both. Um, but for the purposes of this draft, I just simply went with the twenty-eight days, which means that for phase four, potentially shift to, uh, the earliest date is June fifteenth. Um, and then the phase five, which would be, uh, basically mostly reopening with, uh, uh, still a few set guidelines in place, July, uh, earliest possible date is July thirteenth, which would be twenty-eight days after the conclusion of, um, phase four. So, um, I'll go back up to phase two, which again, uh, all things being equal, we could potentially be looking at implementation on May fourth, uh, with the governor's state-of-home order, uh, including. And so you'll see directly after the timing, there's a prerequisites, which basically states that the state restrictions allow for local action. And then, uh, I, I make mention of local indicators, which I'll speak to you here in a second, but local indicators showing a decrease in community transition, uh, then subheadings of sufficient testing capacity, as well as personal protective equipment expected and to be available. And then healthcare system is expected to be able to cope with possible increase, and then the public health system being expected to promptly identify and isolate infected individuals. Um, so I'm still hammering at some of those indicators, but if you look at the bottom of the pages, uh, on the, the footnote number one, I've listed six indicators are spread to be considered, uh, considered to include, but not necessarily limited to. Uh, there's other counties that are also developing metrics as well. Um, and, and so these are some of the potential, uh, metrics that I'll be looking at locally in terms of continuing to keep a pulse on the activity. But the big, the, the, the main two, um, that I, and I spoke to this yesterday, is the, um, this number three, whoops.
Hey, Nick?
Yes, yes, sir.
Can you blow it up to like a hundred and twenty-five percent?
Oh, yeah. Is this a little bit better?
Well, especially for that small print at the bottom.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's great.
Yep, no problem. So that number three is, uh, percentage of laboratory tests that are positive per week, which essentially would be that metric of how many tests have we run, and how many of those tests have come back positive. So again, um, I, I spoke this morning on the eight-thirty call, and as well for you Commissioners, that we're running at about a five percent positive rate in relation to the number of tests that we're administering. And I, I think it's really important to understand that regardless of the activity economically, whether we reopen in, uh, a more liberal sense or a more conservative sense, I think there needs to be an, an understanding, and in some respects, a comfort with the aspect that we will continue to, we will continue to have cases. Um, so taking the aggregate number of cases at the county level wholesale, I don't think is the, the most appropriate measure. It's certainly part of the puzzle, but it's not the most accurate measure to, I think, simply make policy decisions based off of. And so I'm much more apt to follow this percentage of laboratory tests, which would be indicative of, are we still able to maintain a relative threshold within a, a percent or two, uh, around that five percent, uh, kind of mark that we've been hitting, which right now we're significantly under that of what the state is finding in a twelve percent, um, a twelve percent, uh, uh, positive rate in terms of tests administered. The caveat, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, I have a question regarding the, uh, testing.
Yeah.
When they do the nasal swab and send it in for a test, does that indicate also whether you've had it or, and are recovered, or, uh, that you just have it and are, uh, uh, subclinical, but that you can't spread the, uh, virus?
Yeah, it's a good question, Commissioner Hurst, and right now, the, so the nasopharyngeal swabs, we're finding here personally, and when I say personally as a county, we're finding that they are, they are very, um, uh, sensitive, and that a number of our recovered are being re-swabbed and testing positive again. Uh, we've been in, we've been in conversations with the state, and there's a high confidence level that, um, sorry, there's a high confidence level that, uh- Uh we've been in, we've been in conversations with the state, and there's a high confidence level that um, sorry, there's a high confidence level that um essentially for those recovered, meaning uh they they have no more symptoms and have recovered from the symptomology that they presented, that those nasopharyngeal swab tests are actually picking up incidence of dead viral bodies still, still in the, in the host. So to your question, um yeah, we might be beginning to see the indications of seeing people who have recovered being nasal swabbed and and showing incidence. We just, right now, it's it's confirmation from the state, but it's a, if if, if I may, it's a soft confirmation, because we don't have anything else to necessarily explain it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. It also throws in uh effect of how accurate uh those tests really are.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And to use, to use as a measure to determine which phases you're in, uh throws some uh doubt, I would say, if if we can't tell that, and I don't, I know that you probably won't be able to test it officially until you can get an antibody.
Right, yeah, no, it's a good point, Commissioner. I think it's uh, that's why I, that's why I don't believe, and I spoke to this yesterday to the steering committee, that truly, we can't rest on one indicator solely, but it has to be in concert with a number of indicators that we continue to monitor effectively. So in concert with the percentage change of positive laboratory tests as a ratio, as a percentage of the number of tests we run wholesale as a community, we also need to be monitoring very specifically the hospital, uh the hospitals applica- or the hospitals utilization rates and activity, as well as the syndromic prevalence of what we're seeing in our, um, I I'm sorry, the the, the traffic amount at our local healthcare facilities in terms of uh Prairie Star, specifically, the walk-in clinic centers for Hutch Clinic, of how much upper respiratory activity, we're still having walk-through the doors or call-ins, and we're still working on uh how to aggregate that data into one uh concentrated source. But in concert, those indicators together, I think, paint the better picture than trying to rest on one indicator itself, because you're at, you bring up a very good point, that in the absence of kind of um an antibody testing, be able to say how much have we already had in our community, as well as the oversens- I I shouldn't say oversensitivity, but the sensitivity of the PCR swab, if we were simply to rest on the aspect of how many positives we have. Again, we know we're going to continue to have cases, it they, it's just going to happen, but that metric in concert with the activity that we're seeing, i- I think is going to be a better indicator or a judge of where we truly are at as a community versus, oh, well, we just have another positive, time to shut it down again.
Nick?
Yes.
Could you finish, could you follow up on Commissioner Hurst's comment, a question about the antibody testing? Where is that? When would that be available to us? And how would you use that in your decision-making uh matrix?
Yeah, so uh unfortunately, antibody testing, um it it doesn't seem to be on any, any relatively um uh uh timeline, relatively speaking. I, and when I say that, probably we're looking at a few months, I think. Now, that could certainly change, but there's, there's multiple challenges in terms of, number one, the supply chain pathway to the, to the Ca- to the state of Kansas, in addition to uh kind of all the concerns with regard to antibody testing and FDA approval, and the validity and efficacy of the ones that are being touted right now. Um a- and what I mean by that is, there's a lot of concern about antibody testing that is out there right now, that it's, that it's picking up antibodies, i- it's coming back positive, but they, the actual test itself can't differentiate the the SARS-CoV-2 viral body, which is the one that leads to the COVID-19 illness. Or, again, coronaviruses have been around for at least the nineteen-sixties, uh so essentially, this antibody testing, or a number of these antibody testing, could be coming back and saying, you test positive, and what it really could be saying is, at some point in your life, you had a cold associated with coronavirus, and you're testing positive. And so that's the challenge right now with the antibody testing that is out on the market, um and I and I know many companies and the FDA is working with them to try and get a more efficacious uh antibody testing, but those are the challenges right now with robust antibody testing.
Okay, so so then, the summary here is, antibody testing is a ways away, and it doesn't factor into anything we're talking about, and we should just really focus on getting the positive-negative testing done, correct?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yep, not a problem. Uh any uh any other questions on potential indicators? Again, uh these indicators are listed as kind of a snapshot, but I'm still developing those specifically, and it, um I guess, uh also, my expectation is, um as as these indicators are developed, I want it to infuse them into the COVID-19 dashboard that's public-facing, so they're not simply indicators that are being measured as as much as we can share. Um that aren't just kind of in a, you know, behind closed doors, so to speak, so so the general populace will be able to kind of maintain a a pulse of what's going on in our community as well.
Nick, it was on the call this morning, but could you uh just talk very briefly about how testing is paid for, for the new members on this, new media members on this call, or also for people that might be listening in? I think it's very important in our community right now, with the number of unemployed, that the testing, that no one's afraid to get tested because of cost.
Yeah.
If you see that, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, so um in, and I don't remember which wave of federal um support uh legislation that pushed through, but essentially built into that was the aspect of free uh free coronavirus test, uh SARS-CoV-2 testing. Um a- and essentially what that means is that any individual who presents should, should be able to get tested for free. Um what I need to, what I need to follow up more specifically on is the aspect of kind of logistically how that works, and whether that's a um, whether the the institution, uh so the healthcare body that administers the test, uh whether they log that themselves as a, as a COVID-related cost, and then they're reimbursed through the federal funding, or if it's an aspect upon the individual, uh i- if the individual is to be, i- i- you know, if the individual is just supposed to advocate on on their behalf. I need to follow up and and seek further clarity to to put that clarity out there, but all testing coronavirus-related is free. And um and I know that the p- the potential um population testing, from the information we had, is there's no cost associated with it. Um so the the testing that Adam and I were speaking to earlier, um that there will be no cost to to get swabbed uh there. Uh there's also, I I know, um, you know, when we make specific references to referrals, um to whether it's Prairie Star uh or the Hutchinson Clinic right now, uh they don't get, they don't get charged. Um I I know many of the private insurers, for those individuals who have private insurance still, uh they're waiving those costs, so uh costs should not be a barrier to getting tested. And and in some respects, if there's any healthcare that you are, that you require in association with um symptomology from COVID-19, that should also be free. Um that's a little more complex, though, but in the aspect of testing, uh caution not be a factor. I just need to make sure to nail down specifically how that works for everybody, and then make that, make that public.
Thank you, Nick.
No problem.
Nick, Nick, I uh I noticed you're in red, the social gathering's limited to fifty people, or per person over fifty square feet.
Yes.
I did some math earlier this morning with regarding that uh six-foot radius.
Yeah.
And I came up with uh uh basically an absolute minimum of thirty-six to forty uh square foot, so I uh I uh can certainly uh uh agree with you on that fifty square feet.
Yeah, I uh, well, before I ju- I appreciate that, Commissioner Hurst. Is there any other questions on potentially um indicators or testing or anything before I jump back?
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Nick, I would ask that uh one of your prerequisites that you list is, local indicators show decreasing community transmission for fourteen days before beginning this phase. Uh currently, uh would we uh uh would that be met currently?
Yeah, so it's a good question, Chair- Mr. Chairman, uh and this was brought up on the steering committee as well, and so with the activity that we've had, again, monitoring these metrics, I would argue that barring nothing crazy happening throughout the duration of this week, that we're on track for potentially instituting this plan on May fourth.
Hey, Nick, since we're talking about dates, is there a reason why this phase doesn't have like fourteen or twenty-eight day requirement?
Yeah, so uh uh I landed on two weeks uh in terms of, uh are you talking about from phase two to phase three, Commissioner Bush?
Uh uh well, phase two's when we reopen the businesses and they start uh working, right?
Yeah, uh yes.
I mean, I guess I was just wondering why, it's gonna, as as we've talked about, it's going to be one or two weeks before retail starts picking up, and people start feeling comfortable going out, and also, people start, you know, managing their space. Seems to me like it might be two weeks before you even see any impact from the initiation of phase two, and I was just wondering why we wouldn't go, you know, no sooner than twenty-eight days before moving into phase three. That's just something I'd like you to consider and discuss, but what are your thoughts on that idea?
Well, I think um, I I think it's an absolute fair um comment, I I think. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you raise a really good point, Commissioner, in that uh if if.
Hey, Nick.
Yeah.
Nick, I don't mean to, I don't mean to put you on the spot, if this is something you want to kind of go back and think about and discuss with others, that's great, but that's just something that just popped up in my mind, when I saw the other phase was twenty-eight, it seems to me like this is the crucial phase for people to make the changes you're recommending, and the industry partners or stakeholders are recommending, and then give it some time to uh to flesh out in terms of community involvement. But you don't need to give me an answer now, or I'm just, just something just came up, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you're fine. I think i- if I may, just think out loud, but I definitely want to take it back, is, I think there's a.
I just don't want the media writing down your thoughts out loud.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's a good point. Okay, that's a good point. Yes, I will take that back for consideration.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Um, okay, uh, jumping back in here, um, we talked about the indicators, so essentially on this form, uh some general principles is that uh s- basically, some form of physical social distancing is still necessary throughout uh throughout the community. That includes the the six-foot um, the six-foot window, no less than ten minutes within that window, if if possible. Um then the aspect of, uh and I'll I'll touch on it here, um uh uh the aspect of um, you know, mask use, i- is it, is going to be a recommendation for certain at-risk um or high-risk uh businesses, a- and then as well for the general la- uh audience, but but uh for the most part, social distancing, soc- social distancing requirements are still in effect. Um we we most certainly are high-risk individuals, which again is our our aging population, those with co- uh uh or underlying health conditions, and then are immunocompromised. Uh we still want them to uh really adhere to um nonessential travel, uh if possible, receive services through others that may be able to fulfill that uh that essential uh uh essential travel, if they have the ability to do so. We had a good discussion yesterday about the aspect of nonprofit work here as well, uh but again, um the those those high-risk populations are are those still that we're most concerned about, uh regardless of the the uh, regardless of the status of economic commerce activity. Um.
Nick, can I add a question here? I I'm concerned also with the high-risk, two areas of high-risk people, but isn't it, would you say it would be fair to, fair to say that a lot of us are going to be exposed to the COVID-19, and it's a, and it's up to uh our own immune system, whether it handles it, or whether it overreacts or underreacts? And that we have to then see clinical uh or hospitalization or something, depending upon the severity?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that's a fair statement, but I also um a a major aspect to this as well is, we just don't want to completely open the gates, uh because, again, the the underlying, or maybe it's not even the underlying, but general strategies is, again, to continue to monitor our healthcare system's ability to work with the increased traffic. So so again, those high-risk populations that we're speaking of, we don't just want wholesale to, activity to go back to pre-COVID, um pre-COVID activity, in respect that, I I agree, I agree in that each individual immune system's and body's response is is going to essentially um define how this affects you. But at the same time, we know statistically speaking, that uh those are, those high-risk populations have a greater propensity to utilize healthcare services, and we just want to be cognizant of not trying to overrun our healthcare services as they're available.
Yes, I I I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um businesses with high risk of transmission, which uh we're, uh I I sub footnote here, uh we're drawing on to the Johns Hopkins document uh from the Bloomberg School of Health, that has kind of classified functions of of business. It's not a, it's not an expansive document, and there'll be so, there'll be some um subjectivity in terms of where a certain industry fits, but for the most part, it's a good playbook to begin to lean into. And then um for those high-risk businesses, consult with the Reno County Health Department about their specific reopening plans. Um and then uh associated with that is, and this was brought up on the call yesterday too, is developing a specific uh triage uh system with regard to those businesses who want to consult with the Health Department in regard to their plans, et cetera, so that, and then developing a a a living document, like a a frequently asked questions page, if you will, for general uh guidance that that is developed through this process, and then making that publicly available on the website as well, to try and assist people as as we tackle each one of these in real time. And then uh businesses being allowed to operate are subject to restrictions depending on their specific risk profile. Again, that would be part of uh uh consulting with the Health Department and getting their specific, their specific plans in place. Uh the main changes are essentially, we're transitioning, transitioning from a statewide stay-at-home order to um to to our plan, if if we're allowed. Um restrictions for for this phase, so for phase two, we would uh still heavily advocate for telework- teleworking to be required as best as possible, to try and just uh lessen the amount of aggregation of people, i- if a business can help to facilitate that. Uh the big conversation yesterday was around this aspect of social gatherings, and so initially, in the doc- in the document yesterday, I had proposed that social gatherings limited to twenty-five people or less. And then uh the specific situation for businesses was around the um, I was trying to look at a a general metric that would impact each facility, but could, we could work to try and make it as equitable as possible. So originally, I had um the fifty percent of fire code, uh max capacity per facility, and we had a really good, robust discussion about that, which has led to what you see now in terms of social gatherings are limited to fifty people or less, or one person per every fifty square foot, whichever is less. To try and build in a little more uh flexibility or or amenability for for some of the atypical circumstances that we were talking about, talking about yesterday. Um so so we've, we felt as a, as a stakeholder group, that it's still, it's still, again, was establishing restrictions, but at the same point, uh not being so restrictive, especially under the aspect of fire code. Um so we came up with that one person per every fifty square foot, which is actually based off of um uh, well, I'm look, I looked at uh the state of Nebraska, the state of Oklahoma, and then I also looked at the state of Georgia, and between the three, this was the average, uh essentially, ten uh ten individuals per five hundred square foot, which breaks down to to a a person for every fifty square foot, uh if you just, if you just divide ten by five hundreds, or five hundred by ten, so. Um so that's how the fifty square foot came through, but again, whichever is less, so if uh if a facility can't facilitate fifty people um by, or or they can fit fifty people, but they can't facilitate the fifty square feet per each person, then obviously, they would have to meet the uh the threshold of one person per every, per every fifty square foot, so. And then again, high-risk individuals stay at home, and then um, you know, this was a topic of discussion as well, it's a recommendation in terms of employees of businesses open to the public would wear masks. Again, uh, the, so my, my recommendation, I suppose, is that the county holds on the aspect of recommendation and not make it a requirement, in part because I think we should leave it to the specific businesses to, um, to dictate whether they're going to have their employees, uh, wear masks while they're at work or not, um, we also had a discussion about the efficacy of personal protective equipment, um, you know, and, and, um, basically, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in general a strong proponent of glove use for, um, especially for the lay audience in part because of the misconception that, uh, you're, you're more protected if you wear gloves, but essentially, um, research has shown that, uh, it's actually worse because generally, uh, without gloves, individuals should be washing their hands more or using sanitation, um, um, you know, hand sanitizer, but wearing gloves, all the same, um, all the same vectors that you come in contact with regardless of glove use or not are now just on your gloves, and you're actually spreading it more so than if, um, if you weren't wearing gloves at all, so I'm not as strong of a proponent of general lay audience use of, uh, gloves. And then the aspect of masks, of course, we're still in the situation where we want to ensure that medical-grade, uh, personal protective equipment in terms of masks are, um, uh, we continue to save for first responders and our medical community in terms of response, and then the cloth mask, again, the aspect of the utilization of a mask is to, uh, protect those around you, so if I wear a mask, I'm protecting those around me and, and vice versa, uh, and not so much the aspect of not contracting the virus itself, especially in, especially with cloths masks, uh, cloth masks, cloth is porous, and it's not going to necessarily stop the virus should it come in contact with your mask from entering your respiratory gateway, um, and, and so, bas- based off of those recommendations, uh, I, I, I place forth a recommendation for the use of masks, but not, not a requirement, and we had some discussion as a steering committee, uh, about that as well, um, lastly, just... Yeah, go ahead.
Let me, let me jump in here, um, I understand what you're saying about, uh, gloves, but if we're going to go that route, I would like to see a recommendation, or maybe a requirement, that employees wash their hands after serving every customer or every thirty minutes, there needs to be something in there about the importance of keeping your hands clean, and right now, what we have are signs in the bathroom that says employees have to wash their hands before going back to work. I think we need more than that, I think we need to make a stronger statement, uh, if you don't want to say that gloves are recommended, okay, but let's then have a recommendation there about washing hands that's more specific, that a manager can go to their employee and say, hey, every thirty minutes, you wash your hands, or you just service that customer, you wash your hands. I think we need to have something in there, but that's my opinion, what do the other commissioners think?
Oh, Commissioner Bush, I'll jump in here a minute, uh, you know, in food manufacturing, we have a thing called HACCP Plan, and those are guidelines, restrictions, uh, Nick can follow up on this, uh, I was thinking about this, uh, the other night, and, uh, why not just guidelines for keep customers and employees healthy, and trust that those folks will abide by those, uh, guidelines, uh, and then oversight is always available through, uh, our local Health Department. Uh, I'd like to see guidelines, uh, rather I call it KCAE, AEH, uh, for my own thoughts, or keep customers and employees healthy, and just trust that both, uh, the employee and the management, uh, as well as customers when they have the chance will do that.
Do those guidelines have like, uh, specific times or circumstances? Because I'd like to have something in there more specific, so a manager has an action plan for each employee as opposed to a, hey, boy, you need to wash your hands a lot, well, that doesn't go anywhere, in my opinion.
So, Commissioner Bush?
Yeah?
I'm wondering if the thought is that it needs to be built into this foundational skeleton, or if that's built into the industry-specific, uh, recommendations, or is there a preference to have that skeletally a- acro- across the, a- as part of the foundational recommendations here listed on, on this document?
In, in my thinking, and I, and I don't mean to obsess on this, but in my thinking, it needs to be part of this Phase Two, part of the, uh, this is what you need to do, and then the next phase, you, you know, we start backing off and making this optional, because one of the comments that we've had in, in many of the meetings is it takes a while to change your culture, and we need to change that piece of the culture right now, I think, and we need to give managers the, the, something to lean on. They need to say, well, no, this is a requirement, or a recommendation, that you, Joe Smith, who doesn't ever wash his hands, will wash your hands every X minutes or after every customer, uh, and, and you're right, there's going to be some industry-specific that might want to be tighter, like food service than manufacturing, but I do, but I, I personally think we need to have something at the very beginning of this that changed that culture around hand washing, besides the same signs we see in every bathroom that says, wash your hands before going back to work, that's my opinion.
I'm, I'm happy to infuse it, uh, into this, I just wanted to make sure to clarify that.
Well, Chairman Sellers hasn't said anything, I wonder if he has a thought on this issue?
Well, I think I'll refer, or defer to, uh, Nick and you, Bob, uh, Bob, you've been involved in all these meetings that were last week, and would know more about, uh, how the various, uh, participants of those meetings felt, uh, I, I do think that, uh, what Bob's suggesting to put in writing makes some degree of sense, but, uh, obviously, it would seem like to me that most businesses are going to be very, very cautious, so, uh, I, I'm, I'm willing to go either way on this, this issue.
Commissioner, I think we can, uh, I can formulate some language, and then that's probably, uh, be good for a discussion at the steering committee tomorrow.
I'd especially have that conversation with the restaurant folks, since they have experience with this already, and I would, and I would defer to the, to the, uh, to, to the group's judgment.
Very good. Nick, I've, I've got a question on, uh, Phase Two of, uh, it says here that, uh, in general principles, businesses with high risk of transmission with this asterisk number two, that refers to the Johns Hopkins School of Public Health, which I assume that you, uh, can find, uh, and then down below it says, most businesses can receive, resume their activities with some restrictions and exceptions, is that referring to the same document?
Yeah, so the risk profiles are within that Johns Hopkins document, and it's a, it's, uh, it's been hosted for everybody that's been a part of this, but it's on the Hutch, uh, Hutch Chambers COVID-19, uh, webpage, if, if you're interested in downloading it, I can also email it to you post, uh, post this meeting, um, but so that's where the risk profiles are, and in addition to that, uh, the comment of, uh, o- opening for operations is both an association to the risk profile and then working with the department here to make sure that we have, uh, we have an ample plan that ensures, um, you know, public health safety in terms of their reopening plans, if they have to, yep.
Nick, with Phase Two, are there any specific businesses that, uh, will not be able to reopen?
So, I, this is where I, I actually differ a little bit from some of my peer county in that, um, Shawnee County has taken a, a generally aggressive stance, however, in Phase Two, they've limited certain industries to not be able to reopen, additionally Cedric County, uh, is also, from the draft documents that I've seen that I think is being presented to the commission either today, uh, I think it's today, um, they've also taken a fairly, Cedric County has actually taken a fairly conservative stance, um, and have restricted a number of different industries. Um, I took the position that, uh, I, I didn't want to specifically call out certain industries, and instead wanted to offer the aspects of, we, we formed this steering committee very specifically for the expertise of the industry to come together under the oversight of public health, so that we could work for, uh, best, best-laid plans to try and not restrict if we're given the opportunity under the statewide govern, uh, governance, um, so that we can try and open commerce uh, while also trying to assure, um, safety as best we can per that type of industry, um, and then obviously, there, there's always going to be atypical circumstances that we're going to have to, going to have to, to visit, um, so that was the general principle that I, that I took, and so the short answer, uh, Commissioner, is it's not my expectation to call out specific industries, uh, that are not able to open in Phase Two, my expectation is to the best of our ability, we're going to reopen as much as we can.
I know that some other states have not limited any of their, any of their different, uh, various business industries to open, they pretty well opened it up in other states.
Right. Uh, County Administrator, um, I, I think you were on the call yesterday, I just want to make sure, if you, if you have nothing to add, Randy, I, um, you're good, I just wanted to make sure that if you had some thoughts, I, I apologize, I can't remember if you were on the call yesterday or not.
Yes, I was on the call. Sorry, sorry. There's background noise.
Background noise here, that's why I'm blocking.
No, I agree with a lot of what it said.
Yeah, Randy, I appreciate that comment, maybe, maybe it's an aspect of a specific sub-protocol within this document that can be referred to, and so instead of just calling out specifically hand washing, it's a, it's a hygiene protocol that we think should transpose all industry, and maybe we just make specific referral to that that's built into this document, so to fulfill kind of what Commissioner Bush was talking about, that managers have it right there, um, it's within the formal documentation itself that they can lean into.
Nick, wouldn't that recommendation, uh, be very close to what you're saying under restrictions for this phase? Uh, your final bullet point there says recommendations, employees with businesses open to the public wear masks, wouldn't you also make the recommendation, employees with businesses open to the public should wash their hands at least every thirty minutes, wouldn't that be the place for something like that?
Yeah, I think so, I think what, I think what we're just looking at is whether we say simply that, wash hands every thirty minutes, or we say should adhere to suggested hygienic protocols, see Appendix One, or something like that.
That's fine. Uh, it would seem like to me that most businesses are going to be very conservative a- and looking at these recommendations and, and, uh, hopefully going, uh, on a conservative basis, I think Commissioner Bush already mentioned that in some of his statements, but, uh, I think you're going to find that most businesses are going to want to be fairly conservative in this opening phase.
Well, and I would, um, at least from those representative on the steering committee, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would echo that, I think there's been a very, um, you know, while, while the representation is obviously optimistic and eager to get to work, they're also very cognizant of safety measures, and they want to make sure that they're doing, they want to make sure that they're doing it right, so I've been very appreciative of those voices.
Nick, I have another question. Uh, with regard to the employees of businesses, uh, your recommendation is to wear masks, would that also include the cashier who is behind a, uh, a, a glass, uh, that's, that's acting as their protection now, uh, just curious.
Uh, yes, a good question, Commissioner Urs, I think, uh, again, um, I think that's the discretion of the business owner or the, the business itself, um, to interpret the recommendation, uh, you know, those, those, uh, those glass protectorants are obviously to protect the employee from, uh, the clientele that comes through, especially if those registers more specifically, um, so, you know, I think if they, i- if the cashier does wear a mask, it obviously won't hurt, but, uh, also they, they have a level of protect, protection from, um, the aerosolization of those droplets from the, the glass barrier as well, as well, so I think that would just be a determination by the specific business.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Nick, I have another question.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, there's some questions, and maybe, uh, Adam could even fill in any information that he has, but there is some questions about, um, what exactly is going to be coming from the state this week in terms of guidelines? Uh, we, we keep hearing that there's going to be guidelines coming from the state, we've also are hearing that counties, uh, will, I mean, essentially, we can be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive, but with all of the, the executive orders, and I know Adam touched on it in his report, uh, but with the, the emergency declaration, the governor's authority, and the executive orders, I don't know exactly what to expect, and if the commission would have to take some sort of action, um, in terms of our local, uh, our, our local action, um, do you have any thoughts on that, Adam?
My, my opinion on it would be, uh, kind of wait and see, what we were told, uh, last night is that the governor will have a new disaster declaration on May first, whether that's a brand-new one or that's an extended one, if it's a new one, she is going to reissue her executive orders again, but, uh, on May first, I would expect to see some movement out of the governor, whether that's a new disaster declaration or an extension, and then, uh, some new executive orders as well.
Hey, well, why don't we just wait and see and, and stay in touch, and if we have to have a special meeting either, uh, uh, Friday or Monday, uh, so be it, or just at that point in time.
From a personal standpoint, I hope that it's, it's leaved, left up to the counties, uh, rather than, uh, state, uh, I just prefer it be at county level.
Okay, are we through with this issue, Nick, or do you have other things you want to comment on in regards to this document?
No, generally speaking, just I wanted to give the commission an opportunity to see the working document, um, and, uh, and to offer any comments or questions that you might have with regard to its formulation, uh, I think you've had some good comments, I'll, I'll work on it some more and bring it back to the steering committee group, um, a- and then obviously keep, keep the, Commissioner Bush is the proxy, as well as County Administrator Randy Partington, uh, but we'll, we'll keep the full-body commission apprised as well appropriately.
Nick, where it appears to me that this document is saying that the business community and/or the public, even the church community or any kind of gathering group, would be very proactive and very, uh, appropriate in their actions under this document, uh, is there a need to, somewhere within the document, to give you the right to react to that small minority that will do whatever the hell they want to do instead of doing the appropriate thing? It, it just seems like to me... It just seems like to me, from my standpoint, the majority, the very large majority, will do the right thing. But I don't think as a county, we should sit idly by and let some quote idiot be irresponsible. Do we need to write that in this document? Or do you have those powers at this point in time to cover the inappropriate actions of a business or individual or a social group?
So, written with, the last bullet point on the second page, I have written, "The health officer will issue any emergency orders to quote shut down or stop an event where the risk is unacceptable based on our ability to provide care for the community in its entirety." In addition to that comment, as it's written within the actual document itself, as the health officer, appointed health officer of Reno County, I essentially have the authority to act if I believe it's in the best, if I believe it's in the best interest to slow the spread of a communicable disease, to take action. So based off of those two, both the authority given through the appointment of being health officer as well as, I mean, the appropriate heads-up, I can maybe call it out a little more specifically and draw attention to it just for all those involved. But, you know, the authority's there right now based off the office to make those decisions related to health.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think it's very important that we assume that most people will be appropriate. But in those rare instances where inappropriateness is going on, the county should try to take some type of action.
Sure. And I would assume, just as a final thought on that, Mr. Chairman, I would assume that if we have any rather troubling incidences, that, you know, the Board of Health would also be engaged in terms of, if anything, giving appropriate awareness if time allows before action. Or at minimum, giving an update as the Board of Health on action that has been taken, so.
Good, thank you. Hey, are we ready to continue with the agenda or commissioners, any more questions?
Chairman Sellers, if you'll just reach deep into your level of patience for me. There is one thing I'd like to say, that the commission did ask me to represent them. And so I just wanted to say just a very few things. One is, I did attend all of the 16 meetings except for two. One had one participant, the second one had, I asked Mr. Hurst to cover because it was on agribusiness. And he's the chamber representative for agribusiness and at the same time, a lot of expertise that I don't have. Ron, thank you for covering that. I'd also like to thank the members of the media. The first day, we had four sessions. And the members of the media logged on to a couple because it was open. One of the comments at one of the meetings that the chamber received was that they didn't feel comfortable talking because someone from the media was on the call. Deborah announced that at the 8:30 call that we all take. And I will tell you that for the next, I think, 12 meetings, members of the media did not log on. And I just wanted to really call them out for being respectful of process and wanting to give every opportunity for people to participate freely. And so that was very much appreciated. And then finally, as you know, we have 380 people total on all those calls. And that shows a great participation by the stakeholders. It also shows a great job that the chamber did in terms of organizing these meeting. Mike, you're now on the screen. So anyway, anyway, we're doing some technical stuff here. But anyway, I just wanted to thank the chamber. Just a second. Hey, Mike? Okay. Oh, you're fine, Mitch, leave it there. Sorry about that. The final thing I just wanted to say was that it just shows the great, I know, technical stuff. We've got to work on this. And Mike's doing a great job, I'm not dogging him. That computer of mine just froze up like a dog and it was one move. The thing I just wanted to add is that the chamber did a fantastic job of coordinating this. They had three or four staff available on every call. And they contacted everybody, they put it all together. It's all resources that we probably didn't have between the Public Health Department as well as our computer IT staff. I think they did a great job and we really just need to praise them for that. And that's the end of the commercial. Thank you, Chairman Sellers.
Well, I think your comments, Commissioner Bush, are very appropriate. Obviously, it's very positive when that bigger group will contribute towards a document instead of just government dictating a document. So, and obviously, the chamber was the one that really took charge of this, like you said. And our thanks goes to them for including so many of their members in this document, which I think will better represent the cross-section of the community than if just staff would have developed it by themselves. Kudos to everybody involved. Okay, if there's no more comment on Item Three on the agenda, we'll go to Item Four. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anybody online or in the audience that wants to make a comment to the commission at this point? Randy, is there anybody in the commission chambers to comment? Okay, I see shaking your head that way means no. Okay, Item Five, Commission and County Administrator comments. My only comments this morning, I was asked to continue to monitor the Governor Kelly's weekly conference call. And most everything that she mentioned on Friday, we've covered and so forth. I did think it was interesting and the public is generally aware of this, of so many cases of packing plants. Obviously, it seems to me that somebody in industry really let down to let that occur in that magnitude in Western Kansas. The other thing that the governor said, and she's been quoted many times on this, that her intent is to phase out the stay-at-home order. And she also said on Friday that she will allow counties to have more strict ordinances, but not less strict ordinances that she comes up with. And I believe she said today that she will come out with this on Thursday. So we'll know what her thoughts are at that point in time. This is maybe an individual comment, but I really think that the governor has done a good job leading the state. I think she's been open to different facets of the state. And certainly, her order was very timely and should have been done. There's been some people in the politics suggest that she hasn't done the right thing. I think they're playing politics instead of thinking about the public's well-being. There was a letter written yesterday by a group in the legislature that has kind of taken her to task. And personally, I feel that that's inappropriate, that she's been a good leader. And at times of stress like this and public problems like we have currently, we should look for leadership, which I think Governor Kelly has given us. Those are my comments. Commissioner Bush, I do want to thank you for staying on top of passports last week and yesterday and all that's a big commitment to do. And I'm sure everybody on those calls appreciated your being there representing the county commission. The county commission. With that, Bob, do you have any comments this morning?
The only comment that I would have, as we try to get back to some sense of the new normal, if you will, because I really think we needed to continue to work on IT, as my experience this morning showed. You know, I mean, like I said, Mike and his team have done a great job. It's just always going to be a struggle. But the second piece that comes to mind is, number one, I think we need to figure out how to enable members of the public to Zoom these meetings. And I don't know how that would work, or maybe that's not doable. But the second piece is that if people want to have public comment, we need to have something where they're, you know, they request the opportunity, they request the opportunity for public comment and then we send them a Zoom meeting at a time or something? I don't know. We have to figure that out, how this new technology is going to work with public comment. Because right now, I don't know how that works. I mean, if I was Joe Citizen and I wanted to make a comment about something, I don't know where I would get the information on how to do that unless I just simply called the county commission office and requested for someone to figure out how for me to do that. So that's one issue. The second issue in terms of IT also has to do with planning and zoning. I don't know that they have any cases for them right now, but, you know, you've got a very large board with staff that needs to meet. And then you have people from the community coming in that are going to present to them and then potentially present to us later. I think we really need to put the pressure on, not the pressure, we need to put the ask on them to start working through this so that they have the resources, whether that's computers or laptops or, you know, the technology for Zoom meetings. But we need to figure something out so that we can get that done in the next three months. Because we can't just say, "Well, it's kind of crazy time." Well, this needs to continue. And I think that's part of reopening business. We need to reopen our business and identify those areas and what we need to do for tech. And if that means spending some dollars down at public works for the kind of setup that we have in the commission chambers. And I think we probably got to get after that now rather than later. So those are my two thoughts. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Very good comments. It could be that they need to move their meeting location to a larger facility so that they would be allowed to have one person every 50 square feet like these two dictate. So those are good comments.
And I think the more face-to-face contacts you have and not Zoom in meetings like that, the better. So I'm all for that.
Certainly. It could be that we need to consider moving that meeting to a larger venue. You know, when we had the public hearings on wind, we used a larger facility that would allow itself to allow that 50 square feet per person to.
Take place. And I think that increase in rental fee would be a lot cheaper than new tech and probably be better received by members of the community that want to come in and talk to them directly.
Certainly, good point. On that point though, however, if we are allowed to resume partial meetings, my hope would be next week that we would meet at the county courthouse and keep our six-foot distancing and allow only that many people into that room that would allow and let people come in and out as their topic comes up. Commissioner Hurst, comments this morning?
Yes, thank you. I too agree with you, Commissioner Sellers, that next meeting needs to be at the courthouse so that we can have a little more acceptability out in the area so people could contact us. I thought we had given directions earlier or asked them to proceed with the planning commission and develop a means to meet, whether it was via Zoom or else. But you are absolutely correct, Commissioner Bush, that needs to proceed with the things on their plate. I sat down this weekend and was thinking and looking at lots of different things. Most of them were covered, what I was going to say today. But as of Monday morning, the total percentage of Reno County population that has contacted the virus is, and it's a touch, a fraction, but it was .0415%. 400 to 1% that I had knowledge of, according to the 26 that I had knowledge of. And I was wondering, how much have we really taken into account, whether it's county or state government, the continued stay-at-home effect upon the mental health, well-being of all of our citizenry? I know very little has been, has been done to help a lot of private self-employed persons who really needed the services to get on with their business and life and to pay the bills, whether they were depending upon the courts being in service or any other professional services. I think most of the points are covered. One thing that did bother me a little bit is in all of our haste to do the stay-at-home. When I go into Market Square or Walmart or any of the big box stores, whether it's Home Depot or whatever, I can go in and I can buy shoes, clothing, any appliances, toys, bikes, and a myriad of other nonessential items. And why then were our local businesses and locally-owned franchises shut down? You know, I think there's at least one Walmart store that limits 500 people into their store at one time. I know in Manhattan, from what a person has told me, that Home Depot allowed 100 people in their store. We have small stores downtown that couldn't even have one customer there in store. I think there's some discrepancies here that if, should this ever come about again, that we need to make sure aren't there. That's where the money comes from and to operate our local government. I think we, in a way, have not treated everyone fair, including our local taxpayers. I think it's absolutely time to get our economy functioning. And I congratulate and thank Bob, Commissioner Bush, for his suggestion to get all of these started and get industry involved in how we can operate and get back open. And that's a great asset to have that many people involved from all of the 16, 17, 18 different industries to give input so that public health has another aspect of what's going on in the county. Anyway, I understand the seriousness and especially am concerned with those that have either a health situation that becomes serious should they contact COVID. That is the older population. It's just time to get on with it and let's open up and let's. I trust our businesses and I trust most customers that they will do the right thing. And I don't want to see undue pressure put on them. But I think there's definitely some guidelines, recommendations, if that's a more appropriate term. And I guess we want to get on with life and let's get back in business. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like Reno County has done an outstanding job of minimizing the problems associated with a number of cases. And I'm highly pleased to know at this point in time that Reno County has had no deaths and I hope that it stays that way. I'm very pleased with the actions that we've taken up until this time. I agree, it's time now to reduce some of those limitations and be somewhat more open. And as all of us have said, I hope it's appropriate that everybody takes appropriate means and methods.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that Nick logged back on. Does he have some comments? Does he have some comments?
No, I, I don't necessarily. I just heard mental health, so I turned around to make sure in case there was something.
Well, you're, you're on point, we'll give you that. After all this work, you're still on point. Good job.
Okay, county administrator, do you have comments this morning?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. And.
I'll keep them six feet away. There you go.
Sorry about that, commissioners, I'm not sure what's going on, but I know IT's been working really hard on this. You can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. We can hear you now.
Okay. And it even says Bob Bush, so if I made comments, no.
No voting.
Okay, just wanted to let you know that IT, kind of in response to some of the comments, IT has worked really hard, and we did, or, I did let public works, the planning department know, and they let the planning commission know, if they wanted to have Zoom meetings, we could set it up, we could figure it out. For last month, or for April, they did decide not to do that. If things change, we can make sure that they have a space facility to go to, or that Zoom is available for them. It doesn't help as much with public comments, because it would be on Zoom, but we can do some of that work. IT can make that work. And also, kind of in response, the public still can come into the commission chambers, as long as it doesn't get too many people at one time. We just haven't had anyone show up past month to make any comments. And I don't know if the community, if we need to put that out there, that it is open to where they can come in. So we'll look at that, and I'll be in communication with Chairman Sellers on that. Then I wanted to let you know that the, at the county level, the county clerk, county treasurer, and the appraiser, and then landfill, are all within either this week or next week, bringing all their staff back to be working all at the same time. They've been doing split schedules to kind of help with the isolation or the social distancing. They all have face masks, so they have the mask ready to go. And we are going to be at full staff over at the ANAC this weekend, next week, just for you to be aware of.
Randy, do you know how the, the process and the tag and title department went with limited staff and social distancing? Did people still get served over there well?
They got served as, yes, the treasurer's office did a great job. They were overloaded, so there are probably people that are, may not agree with, that they got served, but the treasurer's office, they were busy all the time. So there are people outside waiting, people try to call and have to wait because there are so many calls, they can't all be answered at one. But title work and tags, tag work has been going on nonstop, so we're, they're trying their best to keep up with everybody. Were they fully staffed or did they go to split shifts? They were on split shifts. So Commissioner Bush, if they're fully staffed or split shifts, they were doing split shifts. I believe this week, the treasurer decided this week to bring everyone back, so they are fully staffed at all times right now. So that should help out a lot. They know that they're getting right into the busy part of the tax season, except for motor vehicle stuff. It is very busy over there right now. Another issue, the budget 2021, just to let you know, I know it's, we're a little behind schedule on getting to the commission with some reports. We're waiting on some things, and with this pandemic and changes modifying the 2020, there have been some things that we haven't completed yet, so we are working on that, and we'll get back to you guys, I'll get back to you as soon as possible. The main thing that I've been working on the past week and this week. Self-tax collections. Yesterday, the county treasurer sent out the self-tax collections for the month of April, which was actually collections in February, so we're two months behind. The April of 2020 self-tax revenues were about $11,000 less than last year at this time. So we don't know if that's an indicator of things to come. It is a little bit down, but being in February, it wasn't enough to know the true impact of the stay-at-home order and some of the businesses being limited in their activities. For May and June, those collections, that's when we'll probably see the biggest impact, if, to see how much self-tax may go down. Any questions on that?
Didn't the total for last year, wouldn't those totals have included our tax collected for the jail, which disappeared later on in the year?
It would have, but that would have gone to a different, that, for most of the month, that would have gone to a different fund. For the month of September, that was a high level, and so that was when the self-tax went back to where that had the impact. So not every month.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then just to let you know expenditures, I ran a quick report yesterday, and all the expenditures across the county are slower than what they would be normally. So all the departments and agencies are watching their spending as much as possible. Things are looking good there.
When can we expect to see April's revenues since the last week?
You'll see March on the 20th of next month.
Right, it's the end of the month, so the April will be in June. The end of June will know the April collections.
Okay, and in May?
For, for what was generated in April will be June. We get the money in June, so we know in June. So, yeah, a couple months behind. So, thank you. Those were the only comments I had.
Questions for the county administrator? Hey, does the county counselor have any comments this morning?
There would be no.
I'm assuming not, since I don't see anybody in that screen.
He's, he's heading there. There he is.
Okay, does Joe have any comments today, Randy?
No.
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, number six, determine additions to the agenda. Are there any commissioners or staff that has any recommended additions to the agenda today?
I have none.
I have none.
Neither do I. Randy, any additions?
No.
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 Item seven, the consent agenda, which includes vouchers of $300,449.44, change orders 2020 of 168 and 169, and the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Series Physical Year 2021 Prevention and Graduated Sanctions Block Grant Application to be signed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Second to that, second, is there any discussion of any of these three items? Not, please call a roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Obviously, I think you could vote three or four times on that roll call there, and be appropriate. Okay, I, I don't believe there's any additions to the agenda. Is there any final comments by anybody before we conclude the meeting?
I would just like to commend the Chairman Sellers for having a one hour and 41 minute meeting with no action items on the agenda. I think that's a new record for the county.
Well, I, I might state that most of the time was spent on a document that you presented.
A thorough document presented by myself and a wonderful staff.
Okay. But, but in seriousness here, I think the people within the county are very, very interested in that document, and interested in what our health department, emergency management people do on a daily basis. So I don't apologize for the length of that report.
Time well spent.
Okay. Thank you all, the meeting's adjourned.